We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. French, can you do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in front of your, on your agendas, you have the board meetings for December 7th and December 14th. I'm looking for any corrections on those minutes. Founding no errors. Please stand up. We accept them as submitted. Thank you. And on the agenda today, we have public comment, but we have here our state representatives, our delegation, and I would like to request that they speak first. So moving the representative over first and then adding public comment after. Would that be okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So we have State Representative Susan Johnson, State Representative Linda Johnson. I'm sorry, Linda Orange. Linda, I see you every morning. And Senator Mae Flexer, thank you for coming and joining us today.
Thank you so much for... I want to thank everybody for inviting us here today, and also I want to say how glad I am to be here before the deadline for the submission of our bills, which is Friday. So we're here today to talk to you about what you want. We've given you what we did last cycle. So this is all the education bills that were passed last cycle, so this is what happened. And now we're here to talk to you about what you want us to do this coming year and see what we can do to help you. We have been before the council, and they've given us suggestions, including suggestions on regionalization of, on our educational schools. So that's something that I've already put into, in for a bill. There are also bills that have all, already been put in by the Education Committee. But we're here to listen to you and see what it is that you want, and we'll do the best we can to try and work out these things that you're asking us. So that's why we're here today, and I'm very, very happy, happy to be here with you and happy to hear from you, so. Hi, Linda Orange. I feel like I'm sitting in a little kidsy here. And I'm happy to be here, too. It's very important, I think, for us to be able to communicate with you, you to be able to communicate with us in an open manner, because we're all here trying to benefit the students that you all are basically interested in serving. So it's important that we do the best that we can on your behalf, because we're here working for you. So pleased to be here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mae Flexer. I'm the state senator for our district, and I'm really glad to have the opportunity to be here tonight and to have this conversation with you, and I look forward to it.
Well, thank you for joining us today. One of the first things that I have that's very concerning is that ECS formula. That's very detrimental to our community. As you know and are aware of, our community is a poor district, and that ECS formula, and we heard it all through the recent court case, that he gave the legislators 180 days. And we both know that that's not going to happen. But that formula needs to be changed, because our district and other poor districts are suffering. And I would like to hear your thoughts on that.
So this is something that I've always hoped to have another voice to help us with the ECS formula. The formula per se is, it's how the formula is administered, not so much the formula itself. So we need to make sure that we get 100% of the ECS formula has its, and the formula's been adjusted, too. I went to the Office of Fiscal Analysis and got a report from them on the formula and how it's updated. So these are, these are things that have occurred. The problem is, is that districts like ours are not getting the full funding of the ECS formula. And other districts are. They're much smaller. The Weagle Room, in terms of the total picture in the budget, is approximately $11 million, which will not really do much to equalize, equalize what we have for addressing the formula inequities. So we're going to have to take a look at, at how we're going to be able to do that. One way that I would suggest this board address this is, and I've mentioned this to you in the past, is to look together with the other districts, the other alliance districts, get together with those boards of education, create a subcommittee, and then come into the Capitol when we have this hearing on the ECS formula, and come in with a strong voice and a lot of people to say that districts like ours should be funded at 100% of education cost-sharing formula. Because we are outnumbered in terms of the numbers of senators and representatives in districts that are wealthier than we are, and we need to be able to make sure that we have our voices heard, and that's one way to do it. So I hope that you're able to contact all the alliance districts. There is about 30, and they're all in this situation, varying degrees of distress, varying degrees of reduced funding, that it doesn't fully comply with what the recommendations would be at 100% of education cost-sharing formula. The other thing, the alliance districts do get a little bit more than the districts that are not alliance districts. So we are getting approximately $2 million more a year, because we are an alliance district. I did check this with the Office of Fiscal Analysis. So I do have a report on that from them. And, you know, we're looking to try, but that doesn't bring us up to the, to the 100% of ECS at all. So it's something we need to continue to work on, but we need the voices of all the alliance districts. I agree with Susan as far as contacting the other alliance district and coming into the Capitol together in unity, because coming together in a large group means, means a lot, and your voices will be heard. So they'll be heard through us as well. But to have you come in and to testify and talk about the difficulties that you have compared to other school districts and funding issues, I think would benefit the town and this district.
I think this is, it's good advice for Wyndham to try to get together with the other alliance communities. I think we're at a moment right now where we've got a unique opportunity, frankly. While limited resources are certainly a challenge, it's a moment where there's a lot of attention on how we can spend our dollars in the smartest way possible, and there's a lot of attention on education funding in particular, in light of that, of that court case. And while, you're right, the legislature is unlikely to act within that 180-day timeframe that was outlined in that decision, there's a lot of conversation about the inequity of our existing funding. And, look, let's be honest, there's been a lot of discussion in the last couple of weeks about the wealthier communities and how much money they get, and they're speaking in unison. They're all complaining about that money being cut, and the districts at the other end of the spectrum, like ours, the alliance districts, they're not doing that. And so I think that's really smart advice for us all to get together. I mean, just here in northeastern Connecticut, there's three communities in Wyndham, Killenley, and Putnam, that are all in that, that same boat. And so even just those three towns getting together and advocating for this and explaining why our educational systems are uniquely challenged because of the, the economic situations that our communities are in and have been in for decades, I think is, is really important. And if we don't act now, we're going to miss a huge opportunity, because this, this conversation is happening. And I also wonder, and I don't know for certain, but the governor may be proposing a completely new formula with his budget address at the beginning of February, so that'll be something to watch out for. All the more reason why like-minded districts should be prepared to respond to that proposal, whatever it is, in unison.
Any other board members?
Thank you for your efforts, ladies. Mrs. Johnson, you referenced a new legislation that you're supporting concerning regionalization. I'm curious about the scope of that. Is it a, what I would think of as an umbrella group of regulations and laws that would structure how we move towards regionalization? Or is it some formula for a stopgap kind of situation where this group and this region would work on it together or give them the ability to do that? What is the form that, that legislation takes?
I proposed this in the past, and I will continue to propose to allow this region to regionalize so that we can have more of an open, open choice type circumstance than we have right now. This school system in Wyndham was a regional center, and it still is. It's just that some of the other places are not as focused on being regional. And so for us to, I think it's a good way to emphasize that, have it be an optional opportunity, or even something that we might want to require in terms of some, some forms of, of, say, buildings and those kinds of things. When you look at the fact that I've been sitting on these municipal opportunities and regional efficiencies committees in the summertime, working with people all throughout the state, analyzing the population circumstances where some of the, a lot of the schools, not in, not in schools like here, but in schools, say, for example, in Simsbury, moving it out of this area, and looking at that area, they have a lot of half-empty schools there. So when you look at the, the situation, and they do have needs in these areas to build additional schools or somehow renovate them to make them more modern because of the, you know, certification requirements. So, so what we're doing now is we're, we were looking at that and looking at ways to save the state bonding money. We're one of the only states that bonds for schools. Usually, the bonding is done by the local community in other states. So hence, but we did that in part because of the Scheffers v. O'Neill case. That's part of the bonding, bonding issue in terms of schools. Scheffers v. O'Neill said, hey, well, what we'll do is to try and attract students in a region, into a regional setting, into an urban regional setting, is to try and make the schools up to date, modern, something that everybody wants to do, so that we don't have to force people into, into integration. And so we've been doing that since the Scheffers v. O'Neill case was decided around in 1998. So that's been successful to some degree, and it's something that we've actually tried here with the Barrows School, which was offered to us by the state of Connecticut because of the segregation that occurred in Wyndham. Then Connecticut's one of the most segregated states in the country, and we need to move away from being so segregated. And so this will help us with that. Eastern Connecticut is probably some of the most segregated areas in the entire state. So we are very segregated here when you look at New London and Wyndham. We need to be able to create good, attractive settings, and we did that with Barrows. We've got 22 sending towns in the Barrows Magnet School. And this is another way to do it. Now, building new schools all the time is not something that the state can really do, given those current circumstances that we have. So we are looking at doing more renovations. We've been in that mode for the last four or five years, to try and make sure we do more in the way of, you know, renovating existing good schools and making them very, very attractive for a regionalization. So there's a number of ways to do this. There's already on the books a lot of opportunities for open choice and different types of things. But we, by proposing these types of legislation, we can avail ourselves of all these different opportunities and look to see what our neighbors are doing and what they need.
Yes? Dr. So?
To change the subject a little bit, there are a couple of things where you can help us make more effective use of the resources that we have. We could do a lot with more resources, but we have to live with what we've got, so we've made some progress, or you all have helped us make some progress, in being able to hire teachers from outside the state of Connecticut. Particularly, we're short on math and science teachers and teachers that are qualified in other languages. And being able, being able to go outside the state, and, you know, we have a lot, we have a large Hispanic population in this town. We don't necessarily need more teachers, well, we can use more teachers that are bilingual qualified, but we also need teachers who happen to speak Spanish. They can help children get, you know, they learn English, but they don't necessarily learn academic English. So they have a question that, it can help if the teacher speaks, speaks Spanish. So we're making some progress there on certification. We have a special ed problem. One of our biggest special ed expenses is speech pathologists. We're unable to hire speech pathologists in part because of the complexity of the certification process for a school speech pathologist. We end up, therefore, having to contract outside for speech pathology at a much higher rate than if we could hire speech pathologists, okay? So if we could reduce the complexity and simplify the certification process, we'd have a more competitive market for speech pathologists. We could save money on a service that we're already offering. And we wouldn't be the only district that, that, I don't even think this is limited to alliance districts. I suspect that some of the more affluent districts have the same difficulty with this particular expense. You know, the superintendent can speak to the details of how difficult it is to hire a school speech pathologist, but it's, it's in large part the, the number of certifications that are required. It's kind of stacked one on top of another.
Can I ask you a question as to how many speech pathologists you utilize now? Mr. Pabon, how many do we have? Mr. Pabon is our new director of special education.
Hi.
And he will add the explanation.
So hi, my name is Miguel Pabon. I'm a new director of people services, and I only started about a couple of months ago, so I don't know the exact number, but I think we have at least, I know we have at least one in every building. The complexity is that they're not all Wyndham employees. Most of them are contracted, and they're contracted for different FTE hours, so not full-time. And I inherited that issue, and as I've been trying to figure out why, I think it was just described, it's, it's a matter of trying to find qualified persons in this particular area, but because of all the certification issues that are involved, so. But there's at least, we have about eight buildings, I would say.
Each one has a speech pathologist.
Each one has one, but I know there's more because they're not all full-time. So I would say between eight to 12.
I think you want to make sure that we lost a speech pathologist to one of those data because of certification.
Yep, we did. We actually had someone who was bilingual, certified in Puerto Rico, came here, tried to get certified, could not get certified.
For two years.
For two years, and went to Virginia.
And DC.
And DC was able to get certified there, would like to return, actually spoke with her recently, and is still having issues, because even though she's now certified in the United States and in DC, Connecticut still will not accept that.
You know, that's, that's kind of new to me. I didn't realize that that was such a complex certification issue, and I think that we could probably look into.
Yep.
The certification process and see if there's any way that we can help, like, get people certified without a big hassle.
Yeah.
I take it that it's...
Yeah. That and as well as the, I would say, I would add to the reciprocity type of issue that we have, and it's, that does not only relate to speech pathologists, it relates to, I think, most of the certifications in Connecticut. When it comes to reciprocity, Connecticut always has a lot more, you know, it's a higher bar, which, you know, in some cases, that's good, but it causes for people to not be able to come here or want to come here, because, you know, they, they'd have to either take more courses, take more tests, it's more costly, and it just doesn't make sense.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Garcia?
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question on that? So if you could put together, as we're working on this, if you could put together a few examples of, you know, we had this position that was open, we had this person we wanted to hire for it, or it took, and they couldn't, they couldn't get through the process because of these certification issues or the reciprocity issues. Or we had this position open, and it took us eight months to fill it because of these issues. If you could get us a couple of examples like that, I think that would be really powerful, whether that's something we have to talk with the State Department of Education about, or if it's something we need to do legislatively, but that would be really helpful as we're trying to make the case.
Absolutely.
Just, just to follow up a little bit on that as well, the, the idea of not being able to access enough people to provide the service versus making, you know, them conform to all the certification requirements that Connecticut has versus the rest of the country. I think that we could probably make a good argument that we're hurting our children by not, by not being more in line with our, at least our surrounding states.
Thank you for being here this evening with us. I really appreciate you coming. It's really nice to see all of you. I really appreciate your suggestion regarding the alliance district, and I am a member of the alliance caucus, I will make sure that I bring that suggestion to them. But I encourage you, I encourage you to please support and protect the alliance funding. As you know, you're aware, that alliance funding this current budget year, '16, '17, has been cut, a couple districts more than us, but still it impacts the budget, particularly at a time that we already have a commitment to that budget. So, and I will assume that the cut that has been made to the alliance budget at this particular time in this current budget will carry on for the budget of '17 to '18. So there is already some implication by reducing the alliance funding. So I really appreciate if you could really support that. There are lots of mandates that came out last year, and a lot of unfunded mandates, I'm not going to go over them, cancer awareness, et cetera, et cetera. But there are two mandates that I do want to mention to you, if you could support us in obtaining some type of funding. Two mandates that are very important to our school and to our district and to the entire state of Connecticut. One is the graduation requirement, the new graduation requirement, and the other one is the expelled students providing alternative education. So we are in agreement that students that have difficulties in schools and are expelled or suspended for a period of time should receive an education. With the new mandate, it's a mandate of 180 days, and they should be, they should and must receive the same education that they will be attending school. So they have to have a minimum of five hours per day, 180 days. We have been looking at the cost of this mandate. Superintendent's are on the region. Today I had a conversation with Superintendent Vernon. We have been looking at this cost, and this is going to be a very costly mandate, particularly for Wyndham. I'm looking at my budget, and I know that I have to put in at least $200,000 minimum to start this mandate in the district. So this one is very, very costly. I don't know what you can do, what support you can provide, but this is a very costly mandate. The other one that is the graduation requirement is also one that we support, but is very costly. So now we're going from 21 to 25 with some specific courses, math being one, that increased the number of math credits, and we already have difficulty hiring math teachers. There's some other courses that are very appropriate, financial literacy, we love that students will have that. So although the mandate is very important and we think will benefit students, it still is a mandate that will be very, will be costly for the district, hiring new personnel. So I don't know what can be done in that area. I know it has been postponed for another year, but currently I believe it's still with the class of 2000, 21.
21.
21. So we are in the process of looking at starting that next year and what needs to be done. So those will be the two that I think are really of concern to us, and definitely support the speech pathologists. We see the pain of, of the speech pathologists. I look at what it costs us on a regular basis to, to conduct those evaluations and pay those invoices to the companies that support us on the outside, and it's very, very costly. But the speech pathologist speaking about is not the only one that we have lost. We have lost others that have come in, at least I know two since my tenure here, that have come in from other states and have gone to, one went to Pennsylvania and obtained our certification in Pennsylvania. So we, we're losing people and that cannot obtain the certification of speech pathologists in Connecticut. And the few that have it are working for, working for these agencies, and so the cost is very, very high. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and one of the things that I've been talking with my colleagues in the House about is the graduation requirements, and I think other districts are, are experiencing some difficulty. Everybody agrees that these are good goals, whether it's increased math or financial literacy or the graduation requirement. But nevertheless, we also are faced, we have to deal with the reality of our financial situation as well. So we'll be, I appreciate your remarks regarding that. It's good to hear that these are concerns of yours as well as the other districts, so.
If I may, I'm sure, since I have Mrs. Flexer here, and she is on the Higher Education Committee, I do want to mention that having a community college in our town is a tremendous benefit for students. And I, I'm not an expert in the funding for community colleges, so not say I'm expert, I don't know how that works. But I know that our community college here locally, Willamette, has been decreasing the number of courses that they offer. That has a direct impact on our students that are graduating from here that cannot make it to Danielson. So I will encourage you to, to support whatever can be done, that this Willamette Center or support community college can open new offering or can provide new offering to our students, because it's a great demand. I mean, we have lots of students that are graduating that would like to attend QBCC, but it's so limited in the number of courses that they're offering right now, and they have to go to Danielson, they cannot go to Danielson. And the other one that I will access since here in that committee also, is 2014, the governor came out and in big support of ECO, the Early College Opportunity Program. As you know, we have one of the three, I would say, highlight program in the state with New London and with Norwalk. So I also will encourage you to support any type of legislation, to support the, the community college portion of this program, that is of great benefit. I know that Norwalk and, or Norwalk and New London has a strong foundation, and we are trying to develop it here, but it will be a great help if there's some type of funding from the legislature that supports these type of programs. That in return is supporting what the governor says about manufacturing in the state of Connecticut.
Well, that, I completely agree with you, and first, on the Willamette Center, so one of my top priorities in serving as, in a leadership role on the Higher Education Committee is focusing on the Willamette Center, Quinbuck Valley Community College, and with the folks at the border regions that run the community college system, I sort of think I'm a broken record, because all I talk about with them, the first thing I talk about, I should say, is trying to increase the number of courses that are offered at Willamette, trying to get the college as a whole to focus more on the Willamette Center, because I think that's a real opportunity for growth within the enrollment of the college overall. And I've also talked extensively with the border regions about opening up their recruitment practices and trying to get some allowances for QBCC to recruit students from a wider area specifically for the Willamette Center, and making sure that we've got a strong set of programming there as possible, because I think it's a, it's a huge resource for this community that at times has not been as strongly utilized by the overall, overall by QBCC as it should have been. And I promise you, I will be the strongest advocate you can ask for on that. And on the ECO program, I've had, you know, numerous conversations with folks at the border regions and at QBCC, trying to open up the dialogue around the tuition monies and, and the situation with the ECO program, you know, as a delegation, Representative Johnson, Representative Orange, and I fought really hard to make sure that funding was maintained in, in the budget for this year, and we're going to do so moving forward. We know what a critical program that is, and it's giving a lot of young people in this community a unique path to a promising future. So I think it's really important. Then, lastly, I will just report some exciting news at the Willamette Center. Many of you know that Quinbuck Valley Community College is home to one of the new advanced manufacturing centers, which is a 10-month program that they have a more than 90% job placement rate at, at the center at QBCC, and they're moving some new equipment. placement rate at the center, at QBCC, and they're moving some new equipment into the Willamette Center just this week. So they're trying to expand some of the advanced manufacturing program, programming here at the Willamette Center to get some students, more students from the Willamette area into the program and have some of that programming right here in Willamette, not just on the Danielson campus.
Just to let you know that our students, our students in the ECO program started their first course this semester. So we have two courses that they're taking.
Yeah.
So, one other thing that I would hope you can think about, this is a little long-term, but hopefully not too long-term. We're working really hard to improve this district, and we're starting to show significant progress. At some point in the near future, we're going to be at risk for not being one of the bottom 30 districts in the state. The problem is, if you're not in the bottom 30 districts, you're no longer an Alliance District, and a $2 million hole in the budget administered as a reward for getting out of the bottom 30 would probably drop us back into the bottom 30. So, so something has to be thought about. What do you do for an Alliance District that succeeds?
I think that's a really important point, and I know that's the sort of, what you're describing is a sort of roller coaster ride, that some school districts were on when it came to the priority school district money, you know, they'd get the extra resources, they'd do a little bit better, and then the money would get taken away, and all the supports that they put in place of those resources would disappear. So I think there's an opportunity, as the education formulas are being looked at this year, and perhaps restructured, to play into those formulas, not just the success of a school system, but you need to look at the demographics and the economics of a school system. Just because the students in the school system are performing better, because the school system is doing what it should and achieving better outcomes, that doesn't mean the economics of the town have changed. And so, in my opinion, a program like the Alliance grant, an Alliance District program, shouldn't, nobody should be excluded from that until the economics really got that particular community into a situation where they needed those supports in the first place changed, not just because student outcomes aren't improved, because we shouldn't be punishing school districts for being successful.
Agreed.
Anyone else? So if you happen to think of anything else before Friday, please let us know. Anything that you think might require more description, feel free to contact any one of us or all of us. Our emails are available to you right online, if you go to the ct.gov portal, then you'll be able to reach us, we have a hyperlink. Also, we have, if you haven't done so already, I do email blasts, and I think everybody does here, so you can sign up for those online and receive the information that we have available for you whenever we send out the blast, which is usually once a week or every two weeks, something like that. So I'm hoping to have more connection with you on all the issues. Also, please take a look at, once we start having hearings at the Capitol on these bills, you can look at the bills that, we just had our first organizational meeting of the Education Committee today, and the Chairman of Education put out a whole bunch of general concepts, so take a look at those concepts. If you have any remarks regarding those, please feel free to contact all of us and let us know what they are, because it's really important for us to stay in communication. And there are a lot of people there that have lots of different ideas, and we're really trying to make sure that we get the state moving in the correct direction. We don't want to be the state with the biggest disparities in the whole country, so. So I'm very appreciative of being here, and, yes.
Go ahead, Dennis.
No, I appreciate being here, I was just going to.
Last summer, last winter, sorry, I took the Cabe Winter Leadership Institute, and it's several weeks, and we go and a bunch of us get together, but they provide us with the legislation that has been submitted, and Cabe's position on it, and then we have discussions about it. Once all the legislation is submitted, can you send us the ones that pertain to education, like this Board of Education? So we all, like, everybody doesn't have the opportunity to go to these things because of work schedules, kids, that kind of stuff. I understand that, and I bring back what I can. But the discussion was in the room that night, and it was really important to hear some of the things that had been recommended, that we had positions on for, against, that way we can advocate what's best for our students and we're not hearing about it at the end of the season, when we get those very informative mailings from you guys that say, this is what we did this season, but some things that got through that maybe we would have wanted to have opposed, or have advocated for or against, to help strengthen a case either way. So if you could send those to us once they're all submitted, and maybe your positions on them, that would be really helpful.
Well, sometime, to take a, when the bills are submitted, we take, they're general concepts, and so the process is this. They, we submit the bills, they're general concepts, and then the bills are put through a screening process by the leadership in each committee. Once those screening processes occur, then the committee decides which ones are going to be heard. Then we go through the hearing process, and then, then the, then the committee takes the information from the hearing process, and they go back through the screening and the committee again to see which ones will go to meeting. Then, once those bills go to meeting, there's a determination by the committee to see whether or not they get voted out of committee to screening at the, in the leadership level. So that's the process. I would suggest that you go online to look at that. I'd be glad to send you what we have, but in terms of taking a position on every single one of those bills, when you haven't even heard the hearings, I don't think that that's, that would be productive for any of us to do, so.
Ones that you think are pertinent to us, though, ones that you think.
Yeah, and while we're on this topic of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, their, their vision for Connecticut isn't changed at all, and I think Connecticut has changed. So your efforts convincing them of some of the changes that might have occurred that would be beneficial for our, our town, like more regionalization, which they seem to be adamantly opposed to, would be really, really helpful, and I know that regionalization out here, this area, would be more helpful. So that would be something I'd love to have coffee with you and chat about some, a little bit more.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else?
Well, I would like to thank you for joining us tonight. I really, I know how busy you both, all three of you are right now, so I really appreciate you taking the time and joining us tonight.
Thanks for having us, and we enjoyed being here, listening to your issues because they're important, and we will take these ideas and what we learned tonight from you, your members and your superintendent, and see what we can do.
Thank you. And we'll get that list right to you.
Great, thank you. And we have a few more of these left.
Okay, thank you.
So moving right along on the agenda is public comment. And I have Mrs. Galucci.
Yes, Mary Galucci, from North Street. I have a son at the high school and one at the Barrows Academy. I wanted to say, first of all, I did want to mention this question of certification. First of all, at the end of the fall, an issue came up with the State Board of Ed about this program called Relay, which is, to me, as an educator, sounds incredibly troubling. It's some fast-track process to get people into schools, especially in district, in stressed districts, and I feel all this does is contribute to the two-tiered system that we have in Connecticut, where poor children get teachers with less experience, or this revolving door, this high teacher turnover, high administrative turnover that we have experienced in Wyndham. And I do hope, I'm glad the legislative delegation is here, and I do hope that they do not agree with the State Board of Ed, which, which very irresponsibly embraced this Relay program. To me, it's like a charter university, and it's not like a typical university. I don't want us to water down certification requirements. I understand completely, I'm at a university, I understand completely the idea that it's hard to find people for Wyndham. My children have been in the school district for 10 years, and I want to say, that is not the way to get people to come to Wyndham. We need financial incentives. If somebody's having trouble becoming certified, who came from another state or country, we need to financially help them take the courses they need to meet Connecticut's rigorous qualification standards, which are there for a purpose. Greenwich, West Hartford, Sinsbury, they are not asking for less rigorous standards. Wyndham should also not ask for that. So we can find people if we support them to get Connecticut's high standards, to meet Connecticut's high standards. I also want to say, I'm a member of the High School SGC, School Governance Council, for my second year, and as far as I know, none of us heard about the, having a parent on this RFQ search regarding the high school and the feasibility study, which I find immoral. And I also want to say, a high school is a community center, especially a high school in a stressed district like Wyndham. I want to say, the state, our legislative delegation, our senator, our representatives, you could actually help, because we have a high school which is supposedly, you know, built for a certain number of students, it doesn't currently have that number of students, yet we still need renovations. You could help us with a waiver, because we have high needs. We need to have our auditorium, we need our swimming pool, we need our, our high school here, and you should not abdicate your responsibility as a Board of Ed by going along with the Board of Finance's desire to close this high school down, because what do you think is going to happen to our students, our undocumented students, our resident students, if you do that? I find it incredibly immoral and insulting. And I also find that you have no right to do that without consulting the School Governance Council. Those are my comments. I think my time is up.
Thank you, Mrs. Galucci. Varun Kathar, I'm sorry, I destroyed your name. Come on up.
Would it be okay if the group of us approached you guys?
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, so good evening, my name is Varun Kathar. I'm a recent, recent UConn graduate, and I've previously worked in, interned and volunteered at Wyndham High School and Wyndham Middle School.
My name is Stephanie Marquez, I'm a resident of Willamette, and I'm just going to translate for him.
All right, so thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Oh, gracias por la oportunidad de poder hablar con ustedes en San Antonio.
I briefly just wanted to share about an action currently happening in the community, and to formally invite you all as members of the Board of Education and other folks in attendance today, to two upcoming events that have significance to our town in Wyndham. Okay. So, on Monday evening, a small committee of the Town Council voted in support of a resolution that would make Wyndham a sanctuary city.
Estoy aquí para hablarles sobre unos eventos que van a pasar aquí en la comunidad, sobre la comunidad inmigrante. Ay, el lunes, el Consejo Municipal de Wyndham pasó una resolución sobre la ciudad santuaria.
The resolution is an agreement between town officials and the community to protect the residents regardless of their immigration status. As, as we know, immigration is a federal issue and not the responsibility of the state or local government. The resolution is a strong show of community solidarity and support for all of our town's residents, because while schools are designated safe spaces, or at least they are supposed to be, in theory, some of our students and families are facing a real and present fear and danger outside of the schools regarding their immigration status.
Esta resolución es un acuerdo entre las autoridades y la comunidad para proteger a los residentes independientemente de su estatus migratorio. La inmigración es un problema federal, no estatal o local. La resolución es una gran muestra de solidaridad y apoyo para todos los residentes. Aunque las escuelas deberían ser lugares seguros o están supuestos a serlas, algunos de nuestros estudiantes y familiares están enfrentando gran miedo y peligro fuera de la escuela a causa de su estatus migratorio.
My friend and colleague, Joel, has passed out printed copies of the resolution for you to read, both in English and Spanish, and the resolution will go before the entire Town Council this coming Tuesday, January 17th, at 7:00 PM, for final approval.
Ustedes han recibido una copia de la resolución en inglés y en español, y sería hablada sobre el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad el 17 de enero a las 7:00 PM.
When the resolution was first presented, there were approximately 220 community members in attendance. This includes families and students here from Wyndham Public Schools, some of who are here in this room today. I simply, you know, here to ask you to join us this coming Tuesday, like, at 7:00 PM again, at the Town Hall, in support, or to show your support, or to simply hear from your community on this issue that is, that many of us are so deeply passionate about, and, and many of the students, you know, here at the school and in our district are directly impacted by.
En la primera reunión sobre esta resolución llegaron más de 200 personas, y solamente queríamos recordarles que esto va a pasar el próximo martes a las 7:00 PM, y es algo, es un tema al que afecta mucho a sus estudiantes, y entonces es algo a lo que queremos seguir trabajando.
And then I also wanted to share with you about upcoming action, further showing our solidarity and support for Wyndham becoming sanctuary city. Many different organizations within our town have been working together to organize a rally in March in Willamette on January 20th, beginning at 3:30 PM.
También nos queremos invitar a una demostración en marcha, enero 20, a las 3:30 que comienza en Joston Square. Ha sido hecha por diferentes organizaciones de inmigrantes de aquí de Willamette, aquí de diferentes partes de Connecticut.
So again, the starting location for this march and rally is Joston Square, by the Frog Bridge. And again, I also have, we also have flyers for this event in both English and Spanish that Joel is currently passing out. It would be really powerful to have members and leaders of our school communities represented at these actions. It would, it would really send a message of solidarity and support, and acknowledge the great privilege, but also the responsibility that comes with being an educator, to all of our students regardless of their immigration status.
Sería poderoso tener miembros y líderes de nuestra comunidad escolar presentes en esas acciones. Su presencia enviaría un mensaje de solidaridad y apoyo, y también reconoce el privilegio, pero también la responsabilidad que tiene ser un educado.
So if you all, as members of the Board of Education, have any questions, or would like to speak with us further about either the proposal, or the upcoming vote, or the Marcha Rally on March, on January 20th, we can, we are willing to engage in conversation with you, and would really love to have your full support again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Marquez. Oh, that's you? Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Reports, Dr. Garcia?
Yeah. I would like to start with some recognitions, and the first recognition that I would like to speak about is regarding Mr. Andrew McNamara, that is a middle school English teacher, and I would like to congratulate him for his leadership initiative at the middle school. Mr. McNamara, they say, is an English teacher, and came up, his own idea, very motivated, to start a book study at the middle school with teachers across the country, across the district, and the book is entitled, "Engaging Students with Poverty in Mind: Practical Strategy for Raising Achievement," from Eric Jensen. Eric Jensen has written a lot about poverty and student achievement, emotional learning, culture, and relevance, and Mr. McNamara, that has been with us for a couple, couple of years, is very committed to the school district, and decided to get more involved by ensuring that we can spread the word. the word of what it takes to teach kids in poverty. And so, for me, this is very important, because this was done by a teacher, a teacher leader. This did not come from the superintendent or the assistant superintendent or the principal. This came from a teacher that said, "I want to do this, I want to engage other teachers." So, I think was really worth the recognition. So, I'd like you to join me, sending a little email to Mr. McNamara, if you're Mr. McNamara, to be congratulating for this initiative. The other recognition is the boys soccer team, and I think this is also very important, because in 40 years, this is the first time that the Wyndham Boys Soccer Team received this award. So, the Wyndham Boys Soccer Team received the award of the EC SOA Francis Gisler's Fundmanship Award, and they received it for this year. And again, like I said, this is 2016, this is the first time that the school in 40 years received a Francis E. Gisler's Fundmanship Award. So, we want to congratulate the soccer team, the boys soccer team. Congratulations, yes, yes, yes. You have a flyer that is running around, we're starting our community forum. As you know, this is a very important time of the year, where we need the support of all our parents, community, on the SGC. We are working on the budget, and the budget is moving right along, but this is an opportunity to start talking to our community about what are the priorities and how they can support us in the budget. So, we have in our community forum every month, between now and January, we, I mean, April, we have in some workshop, budget workshop, but the first community forum will take place on the 17th, at 6 o'clock, at the Wyndham Middle School Auditorium. We're putting this in newspaper, we're sending it to different media outlets, the radio station, we're going home tomorrow with students at home, the home liaison when we're putting this out. So, we'll have a call and learn calls to parents, and so we encourage everyone to please spread the word. We want to see parents, we want to see members of the school council, SGC, PTO, everyone to attend and speak to us about the budget priority. At this particular time, school principals are speaking to their, are discussing with their SGC, what should the budget look like in their schools, and these conversations are taking place now, so.
Dr. Garcia, a minute. Can you, I don't know if I missed something, I know I came in a couple minutes late, budget priorities, have they already been developed?
The budget priorities will be developed between, they come from different sources. They come from, number one, what the board wants to see, so when the board come to the community, the budget forums, the budget workshop, that's an opportunity for the board for a discussion. They come from the strategic plan, what we have in the strategic plan, because these are the things we say we want to do. They come from meeting with the cabinets and principals, what are the initiatives that we are implementing, and they also come from listening to the parents and the community during the community forum. So, that's where we come.
So, you won't be presenting budget priorities next week? You'll be listening for them?
I will be listening from the community, what they think is important. I will be sharing with the community what we have in our strategic plan. Okay, and so, these are the objectives, these are the goals that we have, these are the things that we have done, and I will be hearing from the community, what are the things that they think we should continue, what are the things they think we should initiate, what are the things that they think that we should not have. For example, we'll talk about music in elementary school. We started music, is this something we want to move to fourth grade next year? Should we budget for music or don't budget for music?
Thank you.
So, I just want to share with you a couple initiatives that are taking place in the school at this particular time. You may recall that last year, we spent a lot of human capital, financial capital, and effort in implementing a K-12 reading initiative that made us very, very successful. We've seen the achievement of our students in reading. At that particular time, we did not do math, we work on the curriculum for math, but we did not initiate a K-12 math initiative. With the support of Dr. Jumper, that is our new assistant superintendent, we are starting our K-12 math initiative, although we're starting it in January a little bit late, but it's well coordinated. So, we'll have a walkthrough need assessment from middle school and high school on January the 13th. We're using the feedback and the information from that need assessment and that to provide workshop to our teachers. We're starting with a workshop for the high school only, high school and middle school, right? High school and middle school and the 26th elementary teachers and the 27th elementary coaches and selected teachers. And then, we'll continue with another workshop on March the 10th. So, we are, we have a plan to help and support our teachers in math with the Common Core, similar to what we did with ELA last year. Just for your information, one new assessment is coming in place. The State of Connecticut approved the next generation of science standards now, and changed to the science testing. So, effective 2018, we'll have a new test in science. The first pilot of the test will take place in 2017 to 18. So, what you have, there is a transition of the years of how we will move from paper and pencil to online testing and to how, who will take the cap. The 10th grade students will take the cap science assessment as scheduled for 2016, 17, but after that, we're moving to the next generation of science standards. So, there's information there for you to read. There's a lot of support for the new generation science standards, because it's more emphasis and critical thinking rather than memorization that was, what was in the previous test. So, new mandate, new work that needs to be done. There's lots of work being done now in social studies and science in the curriculum. We'll continue to work in social studies, middle and high school. We have to put that whole social studies at the elementary school, since we have to address the transition from the old assessment to the new next generation science standards. As you know also, the Compañeros Lottery and the Barros Lottery will be taking place very soon. Applications already are due, are open. Tonight, tonight, oh, 17, the 17th, Barros will have their first open house, and also the Compañeros will have their first open house for parents. Both of them will be done in English and in Spanish, and the lottery is scheduled to take place on March 29. There has been a lot of advertisement regarding the lottery. We have done media alerts, flyers in Spanish and also in English, and again, the open house. So, I believe I spoke to about both of them, Compañeros and Barros at the same time. Proposed budget cuts, I did not put what my recommendation were at the time, because I have not discussed it with my cabinet. I do have those recommendations, they come strictly from, coming off from the Alliance budget, so I will send those to you tomorrow. It will not impact the classroom, we are taking it from other areas of operations, but still under the Alliance budget. And also, what you have in your pocket is some new revised forms, one that deals with field trip, and one, the one that deals with the SGC discussion of school budget. This, again, is to make sure that school principals, school leaders have a discussion with the SGC about their budget. So, they have a form where the SGC have to sign that they have this discussion, that they see the budget, that they provide advice about the budget, et cetera, et cetera, and principals have a deadline to submit this. So, this is a new revised form, and so you have two in front of you. The field trip is also to make sure that we have funding for the field trip before it takes place, and so that we can verify those fundings. And also, you have, which you know, the reading, first reading of the revised policy regarding attendance during synchronic absenteeism. So, this is the first reading.
And I just have a question, as far as the SGCs, were right on time with them looking at the budget?
Well, each school have different, I don't know the exact time that the SGC meets, each school principal meet with the SGC. I will, I have not sent out, but I will be attending a couple of SGC meetings, I'm starting with the middle school, then the high school, but I plan to attend each one. I also plan to invite all the SGC. Last year, we had a meeting that was hosted by Wyndham Center SGC, and invited all the SGC, and it was a very productive and positive meeting. So, we plan to do it again. But I will be starting with the middle school SGC, and then followed by the high school, and then the elementary school.
Thank you.
And then, a big meeting with all the SGC invited. We may ask Wyndham Center to host it again, because, or maybe another school. But last year, we had one at Wyndham Center.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. And the first reading, attendance and residency, does come from policy?
Yes, this comes from, Policy Committee met, Mr. Flores is not here, so if I may. So, the Policy Committee met and reviewed certain policies. They reviewed the discipline policy, that is here for the second reading, and made some adjustments and answered some questions. They also reviewed the athletic policy to answer the question of Mrs. Lambert regarding probation and some other issues that are there. And we look at the first reading of the attendance and residency policy.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is committee reports, finance and audit, Dr. Murphy.
The Finance and Audit Committee met this evening. Did Mr. Johnson leave the budget, copies of the budget transfers that he wanted us to write for the board members, or not? He had them out to the people, you got those? Okay, if we have them, I'd like to...
He didn't leave copies here.
Let's see, well, Mrs. Lambert and Mr. French will need copies of it. Pass that down.
Yep, here's another one.
And there's Lassard.
Mrs. Lassard. How's that one over to Melissa?
Share that one.
So, the first thing I would do, I would like to move that we add to the agenda under action items, I guess it would be, under the action item, I guess it'd be 11 down there. Under action items, the budget transfer is requested by the Director of Finance.
So, move? Second.
This is to add to the agenda.
All those, all those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We also looked at the status of the 2017-18 budget preparation, you just heard the superintendent's report on that, it's on schedule, and we're doing okay with that. The superintendent also, and the board chair reported on the Monday night, last Monday's meeting of the Town Council's Subcommittee on Finance and Administration, where they considered a proposal from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Financial Consolidation regarding how to actually make financial consolidation happen.
There you go.
And that will be discussed, it'll be on the agenda next week, I believe, for the Town Council.
I was going to discuss it later. We are looking, we had a meeting last night, and we're looking at coming here, February 15th meeting. If you could add us to the agenda.
All right, well, and that will depend, what we do will depend largely on what the Town Council decides to do.
The Town Council's going to get the first shot.
But I, I mean, a few positions of clarity, I think that we now have some understanding with members of the Town Council that the Wyndham Public Schools are not part of the town government. We're a state agency, the town is a source of our funding, we have a relationship with the town that's established within the town charter. But the employees of the Wyndham Public Schools are not employees of the town, they're employees of the Wyndham Public Schools, which is a state agency. And so, in designing the combined finance department, we have to recognize the obligations of the town and its employees, and Wyndham Public Schools and its employees as two separate government entities, and that's, now that I think everybody's on the same page with that, I think we're ready to move forward and actually get some progress made.
Hope so.
At least, that seems to be where that committee meeting came out Monday night, so we'll wait for further action from the Town Council. So, that's basically my report on the meeting this evening. Mrs. Lambert?
Can I ask a question? If I may, the budget reports that we get, sometimes, today's agenda was posted this morning, so I wasn't aware of it when I left for work this morning, otherwise, I probably would have made more of an effort to get back to your meeting.
Yeah, that should have been posted yesterday, but somehow it didn't get, I'm sorry about that.
I didn't know about it, so I couldn't see there. But I'm wondering if we can have those reports and maybe a short description included in the packets when we're going to have them approved as part of the agenda? When Mr. Collagen has something that he needs approved, it gets included in the packet. I'm not a numbers person, and I readily admit that, so I need a little bit of time to take a look at it and digest it and prepare questions if I have them. I would email Dr. Garcia or Mr. Johnson if I needed to, or Dr. Sewell if I had questions on them, but I can't just, I'm not the kind of person who can just look at a number like that and say, "Oh, yeah, that sounds fine, I'm going to abstain tonight."
I will encourage our finance department to prepare their requests and budget summaries in advance, because they didn't give them to us until this evening.
Right, right, so maybe if we could get those in a more timely manner.
That would be helpful.
I'm not blaming you, Ms. Tessa.
No, 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 just a point of clarity. The agenda was posted last yesterday. It did not go out to the board members separately, which is what I sent out this morning. But it was posted yesterday, both at the Town Hall and on the District Board.
Yeah, it was just a matter of clarity for myself, I didn't receive it, so I assumed it was...
I would hope that we can get the process down so that the board members get a copy at the same time that it's posted at the Town Hall.
It wasn't...
That should be...
Just wanting to go and take the record.
Just, yeah, for, I don't know how other board members are looking at numbers like that, but Mr. Collagen just shared his copy with me, and I, okay.
Well, in terms of, in terms of where we are with this fiscal year's budget, we are on track, we're essentially at roughly the same position with regard to the budget that we were last year, with many of the same problems that we had last year, the...
Special Ed.
Well, the biggest single item on the budget transfers that we'll discuss later is a movement of money in order to pay for contracted special ed services. So, yeah, nothing really new there, but also manageable, because we've been through this before.
It was just a request to see if we can get it included, maybe with a short description of what the transfers mean.
So, we can change the process, I can inform Mr. Johnson, because we have never done that before, but I think I like your idea. So, it should be included in the packet, so we'll let Mr. Johnson know that when we have the budget transfer, that he need to give us those transfer, and we can include it in the packet. I like it, I like that idea.
It should be in the packet, and we should basically have an action item covering it rather than having to add it to the agenda and then vote on it later.
Yeah, so we'll make sure I inform it, I like that idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Collagen, school planning and design?
We have water at two of our grammar schools.
We have water at all of our grammar schools.
We have water at all of our grammar schools.
Fresh water, new water.
We have new water, we have new, more new wells at North Wyndham School and Wyndham Center School. We had some minor issues with some mineral scent smells in Wyndham Center School. We believe that's being dealt with, with local filtration. It took a little while to get the whole process done, we haven't quite signed off on it yet because, because of this issue of stinky eggs, sort of, but we think that's being dealt with as we speak. So, we're right at the end of the process, we haven't quite signed off on it, the committee is still in place.
You have jinxed us by saying that.
I know, I know, but almost there. But they have fresh water, new wells, they're functioning well, and we're moving on. The Wyndham Middle School roof is in place, that project came off wonderfully, a very tight timelines contractor, for the most part, did a superb job of protecting your community and the safety of the community and the school, and they did a great job. The roof doesn't leak, by the way, which is a good thing, it's a good thing. The co-gen's are working, the tie between middle school and grammar school there is functioning, the PV on the roof, which is a photovoltaic system... The PV on the roof, which is a photovoltaic system, is in place and working. That committee hasn't quite signed off on the project yet because there, as any project like this, there are punch lists and little things left over that have to be taken care of before you can close the books, if you will. The school planning and design committee met this past week. On the agenda was a discussion concerning the future of a K8 Compañeros program or dual language program, let me say. There's work being done on identifying further how that will fit in the chosen space, which probably, probably will be the middle school because we have excess space in there and it would, it seems to work. Our architect is looking at that now, and we're working very diligently on getting that in place. We will know very soon. We have some tight timelines on that process of applying for bonding, if in fact, we have to bond that. It will be a very small renovation if, if, really, nothing structural, bathrooms and that kind of thing, because the building's in place. But we have to communicate that to the DAS and along with the process of the controversial and on many fronts, difficult process that has gotten us to having written, been writing an RFQ for an independent consultant to look at the question of our high school and what to do with it. They are in place, they have their orders, and they're working on it. They have a very tight timeline. There's an ad hoc committee in place that will answer their questions, but nothing else. We will have nothing to do with their process, and when they are done, they will communicate their recommendations or the data they've collected to the community, to the board of education, the board of finance, the town council, and certainly the board of education because it is our process. We are responsible for the schools. That's kind of where we are, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Collagen.
Also, may I add something? I just wanted to commend Wayne Donaldson to Dr. Garcia. When we were doing the process of the wells with the filtration, last spring, a sulfur smell arose, and the committee looked at whole school filtration systems, different ways to amend that, because it wasn't, there wasn't a high sulfur concentration in the water, there was a zero sulfur concentration in the water. Wayne took it upon himself to get filtered water bubblers, water dispensers, water coolers, whatever you call them, depending on where you're from. And because they are filtered, that saved us a lot of money because we were looking at having to go back to the town council to ask for additional funds. So Wayne was proactive on it, was on top of it, and significantly saved us some money. It looks like this is working. I've heard that the smell has gone away and stuff like that, so it looks like this is working. So I just wanted to commend Wayne on that. We get a lot of bad press, and we always get in trouble for going over on budgets and stuff like that, and we did a little bit on this project because of some other minerals that were found in the wells when we dug them. But he took care of this with as little cost as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, it's policy. Mr. Flores is very ill, and he could not join us, but Dr. Garcia did touch on several policies that are on the agenda today for action items. The executive committee did meet on January 5th. We talked about some of the things that, that Mr. Collagen talked about this evening, the RFQ study. We talked about our budget, the concern that I had with the decrease of funds that we were hit right the middle of the year, and how that was going to be taken care of. Dr. Garcia is jumping right on it, meeting with her staff, and staying away from the classroom, which is very important for, for us on the board and the district. We also talked about our strategic operating plan. What is our goal? As we know, we can't do anything until that study comes back, but we also need to look at what do we, what I'm going to do next. We talked about our KDA 8 building, and we talked about the possibility of, as we know, the Compañeros program is one of our thriving programs, and we talked about making that building a KDA 8 Compañeros program, because that, that seems to be our program that's growing and every year has a waiting list. So we need to look at that and see if that's a possibility. And that's about it. And next on the agenda is action items. And we have two policies for approval. One is the school discipline policy and the board athletic policy.
I move approval of the revised school discipline policy.
All those in favor?
You need a second.
Oh, second. Thank you, Ms. Lassard.
And for possibility of discussion?
Any discussion?
Can I ask, how does this, Mr. Flores Alvarez isn't here. How does this handle high school students who may miss math class only or something like that? May skip, may, it seems to handle a whole day or 90 minutes or more. How do we deal with high school students who may?
Well, so remember, the high school does have their handbook.
Right.
So this is the policy from the state that cover all your major, your major concern, drugs, alcohol, weapons, and other things. But the school have their own policy. They have a handbook of first infraction, IAS, counseling, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't have the details of that, but those are first level, and the schools develop their own handbook and those. And I believe those came to you last year.
No, that question was meant for the troiency policy, which we're not discussing tonight. I'm sorry, that was my mistake. That was off my notes. I'm sorry.
So, well, if I recall, this is a long, complicated policy.
Policy.
Most of, most of which we're required to adopt by, as a result of legislation.
Yes.
No, that was the wrong question for this policy. I'm sorry.
Well, actually, it's not completely irrelevant.
I know, but same word, the troiency policy.
I know, you can see there's lots of thing here that are either new in this policy that we put new or either expanded.
Any other questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, except for Mr. Collagen.
Record, well, record him as abstaining since he's not here at the moment.
Yes, Mr. Collagen.
Temporarily absent.
Just MIA.
Move approval of the athletic policy 5114.2.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. French.
May I just ask, there was, I don't know if it's a typo.
Sure.
One, two, if you count that one sentence as three, the fourth paragraph, it says for the classes of 2017, 2017, and 2018. Should that say 2017, 2018, and 2019?
The athletic policy?
The following paragraphs replace paragraphs three and paragraphs four under additional guidelines. The very top of that next paragraph.
Or we repeat 2017 twice.
Right. So does it go out to 2019 or does it, is it just two years?
2019. I think it's got to 2019.
Does it?
Yeah. Let me go back and look at it all one. 2019, 17, 18.
It's just 17, 18, I think. 19 shouldn't be there. It just, it should, it just inadvertently repeated 17.
And I appreciate the.
Not 19, because 19 start with the next paragraph.
Yep.
So is it 17 and 18 in that paragraph?
17 and 18.
Okay. And then 19 begins the next paragraph. Okay. Thank you.
By the time we get to the 2019, that's, students ought to be maintaining a 2.0 all the time.
I don't disagree. I just wanted to know.
We built this in so that students who were under the old standard would have a chance to catch up.
So if that correction can be made.
And we did put in your definition of probation?
I, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. I wanted to make sure it was clear and unequivocal so we couldn't hear, we didn't know what probation meant.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And next on the agenda, recommended approval for personnel recommendations.
Are these resignations? It says background.
Let's, let's get the motion on the floor first.
I need the motion, sure.
I'll second it.
I need a second. Dr. Sewell, second.
Are these resignations?
Okay.
Okay.
Now you can ask your question.
It just says background, so I wasn't sure if they were coming in, or it sounds like Mike's retiring, but I didn't know if the first one was coming in. Resignations.
That's a fairly short personnel recommendation list this time.
Very short. All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, now we have a recommend approval of the budget transfers recommended by the director of finance.
So move?
Need a motion.
If you're going to move it, I'll second it.
There you go.
Well, you can second it and I'll move it. But we're the other.
We're moving it.
All right. Between the two of us, okay.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
You're going to abstain?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, I came in late. I just wanted to let you know that when I was reading the minutes at home, the December 7th meeting minutes, it had Carrie Markey attending, and since she was no longer an employee of the district at that point, that change needs to be made. I know you approved them.
Yes.
What you choose to put that as a two.
I told her already.
We told.
Yes.
But Carrie Markey didn't work here anymore. Thank you.
We caught that. Thank you. And so, anything else? And we don't have, probably come.
Is there anyone else that wants to?
Anybody else that wants to speak?
Has to be on the action items.
On the action items.
But you're welcome to, if you want to.
Executive session.
Executive session, no.
The move, we move.
So that's it?
Always north.
Meeting adjourned? I need a, let's get out of here.
This is a concern action. Everybody gets off the table and leaves.
I know. A motion to adjourn.
It's a motion to adjourn.